Oh. And then I showed up at the select teams to order. Whoa. Is this serious?
No, it's me hitting record.
Is this AI?
Not for you.
No. Okay, go. Okay. Well, good evening, everybody. Kind of while since I've been to one of these things and I want to thank Rick Conway and the rest of the board for filling in during my absence. And welcome. Barrett, you've been here before.
I have.
A few times.
Yeah.
Yes. So anyway, as I recollect the way the meeting should be handled, we have to first of all approve our agenda. The agenda is calling the meeting to order at seven, which we did. So in order to approve or amend the draft meeting, we're going to introduce the zoning members. It's Clarence Greeno. If you don't know him already, Ed Keith, another member, and Jim Lupoil is our new member who is here for the very first time. So. And I'm Stan Markowski, the chairman, Rick Conway to my right, and the reporting secretary Andy Reid, and Charlie Simpson, the last member here. More than enough for a quorum. So anyway, what we want to do is. The public hearing, first of all, is an application from the, it's application twenty-five dash zero eight.
Yes, sir. I make a motion if we accept the agenda.
Oh. Okay, thank you, Rick. All those in favor of approving the agenda signify by saying aye. Aye, seems to be unanimous. And we'll move ahead. Again, the application this evening, the first one is number twenty-five dash oh eight. It's from the Pittsburgh Village Farm, which requests an amendment to the condition, to conditional two. The decision signed back in. July fifteenth of two thousand and two, twenty, twenty-two, maybe. And conditions for the permit, number twenty dash zero three, which, which was approved, which approved outdoor events on the grounds at forty-two Elm Street in Pittsburgh, the Village Farm. What we're going to do is swear in anybody that wishes to give testimony, either, either opinion of the application.
Yeah, and this date probably is twenty-five because he.
Oh, twenty-five, okay. Got it. Okay, there is a correction to be made on the agenda, and I kind of blocked it when I said it was signed on July fifteenth. I said twenty twenty-two, but it really should be twenty twenty-five. It's written down as two oh two.
Actually, I think that's a typo error.
I would think so.
This is for the Pittsburgh Village Farm.
Oh, okay.
For the Pittsburgh Village Farm, the application is twenty-five oh eight.
So is that the year twenty twenty-five?
Yeah, the year is the first two numbers.
And that's what we just corrected.
Sequence is the last two numbers.
Yeah.
So we, I pulled the template up and that was stuck.
Yeah.
Yeah, we got it in there, Rick.
Twenty twenty-five. Well, it can't be because.
Yeah, it hasn't happened yet.
We're at twenty, I know, but that's, that's looking into the future.
That's not a date. It's a reference.
Oh.
It's a reference to two thousand and twenty-five, the year of the application, and the number of the application in this year. It's the eighth application we've received.
It's different. Okay, well, that's a code I'm not familiar with. You're good. Okay, so we have to swear in. That being said, and if anybody's confused, talk to Jeff after the hearing. They'll be happy to straighten out. Anyway, what we'll do is swear in anybody that wishes to give testimony during this hearing. And anybody that wishes to do so, if you'll raise your right hand, and you so, do you so solemnly swear that the evidence you shall give relative to the cause under consideration shall be the whole truth, so help you God.
I do.
I do. And for the record, Barrett, if you could state your full name and address, and we'll move on.
Barrett Morgan, seven nine Ellen Elm Street.
Okay. Okay. And Jeff, could you just kind of give a overview? I know we do have the application in front of us. Along with a narrative.
So for some of the newer members, this is, it's been an interesting sequence of events when Pittsburgh Village Farm first came to the board to do an outdoor event. It's a few meetings and I don't know how many deliberative session hours to come up with the initial result, which was disagree with me if you like, but I think it was conceptual in its entirety at that point. It was the best they planned and did as best they could to, you know, design this new activity for the village. And, and over the succeeding years, over the time, they have since refined it from experience. So I, I'd rather, you know, Barrett be able to explain to that, but this is one of the, this is the second, I think, amendment to the original permit that was issued in two thousand and twenty. And, and and this one refers to a specific section, which is in your package, of the original permits conditions of approval. And that was that originally they would bring in, everything in the meadow is temporary. That's the basis for this being such a simple application, act two fifty signed off on it. And so it's a seasonal activity at this point still. And everything was, there's no permanent structures at this point still. So they would bring in portable stages, and I think some of the stages came from the venue performance people themselves, like the Genso with the Pandars.
No, the Paramount Theater.
So, so it was brought in under a restriction that said it has to be in a certain time prior to the performance, and it has to be picked up and moved out a certain time after the. And, and Barrett has mentioned in his email, which you copy here as your introduction sheet, that has proven to be not cost effective anymore. So they would like to acquire our stage and put it up at the beginning of the entertainment season and take it down at the end of the event season and store it in the barn. Which is the, the request as far as I know. Is there anything else there?
No, I'm saying tell them all.
Okay.
So it's requesting an amendment to the original application.
Okay, I kind of get what you're doing. Okay, and I totally understand. You know, I assume on a low budget or volunteer group, you probably want to set something up for the season. Makes perfect sense to me. When you start, I'm sure it's, it's something you guys are buying, Barrett, or you're leasing, or how's that work?
We'll probably buy it in partnership with the Paramount Theater. Though it's up until this point to Paramount, when they've had a production, it's usually, can we try to do a Friday night, Saturday night, to make it economically effective? And it just hasn't worked out to bring a trailer out, set the stage up, set the lighting up. So what we'd like to do is, you know, just set a stage up once, leave it there for summer, and then take it down. And now we're talking about a stage being two parts. One is the platform. And I've got a picture, the only picture I've got is on my phone.
Well, I'm a private news.
I think if we want, it's maybe easier to look at it on the phone. So the top, the superstructure, the canopy would come down after the concert and be put back up for a concert. But we'd just like to set a stage up there, up there in the middle. So we don't have to.
So the tower and a platform you're going to take down every time, you're saying?
I'm sorry.
I said the towers and the tent you're going to take down every time?
Yeah, so the only thing that we got there during the week.
And could you pass it over to Charlie just to see?
Yep.
The gist of it.
The training twenty.
Yeah.
Is that Pittsburgh defines temporary as six months. And so essentially, this is still, even though the stage is going to be, it's still a temporary structure.
Okay. All right. So I guess. Anybody on the board have a question or any concerns about this? At all? Anybody else out there? Okay. I guess I really, I know you guys have been here before. We've done all the, all the procedures and questioning for the uses of administering the permit. I don't know what we have to do. I mean, other than to approve or deny what you're presenting, it's pretty self-explanatory. Without beating a dead horse, I like the I guess I, I would suspect that should the board be favorable, what do we have to do to just add this amendment to the permit without having to go through a whole question and answer procedure?
I think it's as simple as that. The board has, there's, there's no other elements presented. All the, all the other conditions remain in place, including the location of the stage.
Right, okay.
And, and so it's, it's a tweak, is what it is.
Okay. I guess that being said, as long as everybody's on board, if nobody has any questions, and I would entertain a motion that we approve the application to amend the permit allowing for this temporary stage system to be erected and used throughout your venue season.
Still moved.
Okay.
Your chair is in motion.
Yeah, I, I asked to make a motion. Yeah. And he moved, Clarence moved it. They're second to that. Oops, Charlie. Charlie did the second. All those in favor by saying aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Right. Fair, no. Okay, let's move forward with them. So Jeff, I guess you'll make the adjustments on that permit that currently exists.
Yep. If, if the board is, is asking me to, to draft a, a version of the decision to be passed around for its review and then approval by the chair, I will look at my list of things to do.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Michael. Good night. Okay. Need to go sit in the house now?
Yep.
Yeah, if you would. Did you vote on the last one? Did you just vote? Yes. Congratulations. Your first vote.
The decision first.
You made your first decision, okay. I don't know if we actually have a time set for the next hearing. Can we roll right into it?
We do not have a time set.
No, it's not. Just to have everybody here for a sec. Okay. So, that being said. Here, wow, okay. Continuing on with the agenda. The next public hearing is, it's for application twenty-five dash zero seven from Jim Lupoil and DBA Eagles Edge LLC, which is located at twenty-two seventy-three Route seven. I guess it's parcel number six ninety-four on the town maps. And that requests a change of use to include a landscape contractor's yard and a future small equipment repair and/or sales. Okay, this application also requests replacement of the existing main structure with new construction of a twenty-seven, twenty-seven and four plus or minus square foot of storage and a workshop for commercial use. Existing uses that are to continue. It's per permit number three dash forty-four to include an office, retail, storage, rental, and signage, as well as removal of the current main structure, which is a permitted structure according to this. And that's permit twenty-four dash nineteen. And as in the last hearing that you witnessed, what we're going to do is swear in any interested parties, and we'll receive any oral testimony or any written or pictures and stuff. And we'll close and continue the public hearing. If there is a point in the hearing where the board feels it's, it needs to go into an executive order to, or a deliberative order to discuss the hearing, kind of like behind closed doors, we will do so if necessary. I guess after that, in the event there is a deliberative session, we will exit it and then insraction and then make a decision on the matter or extend it. Again, after your hearings, I guess we'll have a discussion with Jeff or anybody else of any other miscellaneous business or zoning board concerns. And in a general hearing. So now, as in the last hearing, anybody that wishes to give testimony this evening on, on your behalf, if you'll raise your right hand or anybody here, and do you so solemnly swear that the evidence you shall give relative to the cause under consideration shall be the whole truth, so help me God. Okay, and Jeff, did everybody, these guys sign in or?
Everybody has signed in.
If everybody's signed in, there's no point in getting your name then, okay? Other than, your Jim, I'd take it.
I'm Josh Brittonham. I represent Barneside Estates, which is the adjacent, adjacent property to Mr. Lupoil's business, or those rezoning.
Big Red Barn.
Big Red Barn, yes. I represent nine families who live there. And I've come here today just to state my concerns regarding the noise, lighting, aesthetics, and any other, you know, problems that could arise from, you know, being in direct contact with the barn or with the business. As it's a contractor's business, I feel that it's, or contractor's yard, I feel that's a reason to ask for pesting, netting, and other, you know, barrier shrubs that could, you know, resolve noise and what have you, since the barn is of such close nature.
Okay, all right. Well, as we go into it, we'll give everybody the opportunity to speak on their behalf and stay straight point. Okay, okay. All right, like. So you're Jim.
I'm Cameron.
You're Cameron.
I'm Jim.
You're Jim.
This is Cameron.
Okay, Cameron. So your Jimmy's your dad?
Yes.
Okay. Got it. Okay. You're no relation.
No.
Josh, okay.
I'm the neighbor.
Just the neighbor. Now, do you live there, Josh?
I do not. I simply operate the barn as my business.
Got it. Do you own the barn?
I do, really.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Britton, for bringing me in. You are a resident of Pittsburgh.
I am a Pittsburgh resident, yes.
Okay. Okay, got it. So I guess, and again, Jeff, I always call on Jeff to kind of like give an overview of what's going on. This is a, just to let you know, this is Gary Cooper. He's a town attorney. And because this is in a commercial district, and according to the permit, it's less than required in a commercial district for acreage. Okay, it was a question, it was a question brought up that we thought it'd be very beneficial to the zoning board to have be represented by with some legal staff here, okay, for clarification.
Okay, so, because I was going to mention that, come on. I was going to mention that it's smaller, so.
So Jeff, if you could bring the board up the snuff from the opinion of the town or for you, from you representing the town.
First, I'll ask the counselor if he has a copy of the application.
I do.
Okay. Yeah, all right. So, so this actually has a history with me. If everybody remembers that little ranch building there, some of you folks may remember when there was a a farm and they had a vegetable stand there. And then the Anderson, the Anderson family, who had the TV repair shop back in the day when they fixed TVs in that little twenty by forty ranch. I bought it from Mr. Anderson upon his retirement. It still had a dug well in the front yard. And, and, and I got a permit, which is attached to your package for a real estate office and for the storage change of use. So that's a conditional use permit, and so this is a conditioning use application for a number of reasons. One of them, and the zoning that is applicable here is attached to your package. For a number of reasons, and one is that it is a small lot. It's a pre-existing, pre-zoning, small lot. It doesn't conform to the minimum one acre size in area that if it was being created today, that would be required. So, so under, under section eleven oh two of existing small zoning, it, it gives a definition here in your package. And then, and then there's section eight ten, which applies in zoning, which is development of a latter parcel with dimensional non-conformity. It doesn't conform because of its area and its dimensional requirement, as the road front. So you can enlarge a, a use non-conformity, and you can expand the dimensional non-conformity, which would be a building under sections eight oh four and eight oh eight. So the Lacoins bought this property from me and, and they've been using it kind of as a staging area since inception and using the office and so on. For, over the few years, apparently the business has done good and has expanded, and it's gotten to the point where now it does look more like a contractor yard than ever before. So it was where we start this conversation, I guess. Then, then if you look at the, the, the copies of the application, the maps and so on, the first one you'll see is, is a survey, which is the most recent survey.
That's this one here, Jeff.
That has, yes, that has the B Trans easement to it. Now, B Trans and I fought for three or four years over. They wanted to take more land. Actually, I just could not get them to buy the property. But what we did is in fact get them to bring their boundary closer to the travel lane. They're on the edge of what they call the clear zone. And so I actually gained point three of zero, point three two acres out of that, four years of talking with B Trans out of that. And so this is the current survey of the property, and it is a point three eight acre parcel.
Are you, are you saying where it says here existing right of way?
Yeah.
What?
That's the edge of the, that's, that's the boundary between the state highway.
Right away.
Oh, it jogs all over everywhere. They come into this property and, yeah, it's, 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 it makes no sense. All right. So that's really secondary to the issue here, which is if you look at the next map, there's a for sale surveying survey, which was when I bought the property had done. And it does show the old presumed right of way. And, and long story made short, is that the outlines were the existing buildings were. These are both pre-zoning buildings, the house states to the early nineteen twenties, and the ranch is pre nineteen seventy. So, so the ranch, which is now the storage facility. No, but the thing is, is if you are demolishing the existing building, don't you have to meet minimum setbacks? Well, that's an interesting point. And because it's a non-conforming structure, and, and I, I got a legal opinion about that when I bought the property. It was allowed under the zoning, and I'll go back to these, the, the page that I provided that applies to zoning, but I think makes this work. And, and that is, and you folks will have to evaluate it. It's a section eight oh four, which is enlargement of a non-conformity. We're really not, we're, we're, you're enlarging the non-conforming structure, but it says expansion of a dimensional non-conformity. And so you have to evaluate the application under section eight oh eight tonight.
But doesn't A say accept the type of use?
You're looking at eleven.
What you just said, eight oh four, all provisions of this regulate, this is a use unconformity may be enlarged on the same law, provided that A, all provisions of these regulations except type of use are compliant. You just got in here to change of use.
Well, that's.
You're changing the use.
They are changing the use. That's part of the.
Right, but it's a pre-existing, non-conforming use as defined by Pittsburgh's regulation. You just said that, and I'm saying accept the type of use. You've got a different use. This is going to become a different use. It's not, it's not an expansion.
If it's going from one use to a different.
To a different use.
Okay, well, they're adding a use, be correct. And actually, this is where I think the applicants can add the information to this to this conversation. So, so the, so the in, in terms of the introduction, this, this shows you where the existing structures are. And then the property owners. Okay, great. So the, the green shows the existing single family, it sounds like a single family house, it's actually now it's just an office. And then where they want to take down that building, because it isn't going to stand, it wasn't going to stand much longer anyway. The, the, and the orange outlines with their application is looking to do.
Okay, the orange outline with the lines through, what does that mean?
Well, the lines are the green. And the oranges, okay, okay. So if you, if you tie into the narrative that's been added here, they want to build a workshop in the crosshatched.
So you're replacing, replacing that building with another one in that same shape.
And the key here is it's in the same baseline.
Okay.
For the, from the existing building, both on the, the north and east.
So the new building will not be any closer than the existing building.
That's correct. On, on, on that part of the application. Then they have an open overhang, which then connects to two eight by twenty shipping containers that'll be placed there. Okay, okay. So that's the, that's the request, as far as I understand it.
And that new building is a workshop.
That's the plan. So, so the next, the next thematic, which is that shows kind of like where the existing storage facility, detached storage facility and the existing signage is. That's where they're, that gives you a better idea of what their request is. They're going to build the shop. They're going to have an overhang on the west side of the shop, go to provide shelters, and then, then the two containers and the two containers would be permitted in nature and would be considered structures.
So there's, is there any portion of this that's residential?
No.
So the residential use is being discontinued.
Correct. Right. It was, it was really not, well, it was, it was residential while I owned it, but it hasn't been residential since.
But it was always on the commercial law.
And you said that you bought it from Anderson?
Yeah.
You're sure it wasn't Ken Johnston? That repaired the TVs there?
Was it Johnson or?
Hey, Johnson.
I just.
Oh, okay. Well, you guys are right, mate. I mean, it's been a long time since.
And it was formerly Clark's Maple Stand for people that are.
Store.
Yeah, it was a store.
General store.
Beer and cigarettes, right?
It was a retail, Rick, I guess.
But that used to be long this.
Yeah.
I've got to pack it, but I just like confirmation. Is the property point three eight acres or point four two?
It's a, it's a, it's on the tax map as point three eight acres, correct? Nice, but I think, but on this.
There was a trade.
On this one, real estate, Jeff.
That's why I'm asking.
Sell survey, which I would assume is probably more accurate than a general town tax map, shows it as point four two. Well, to be, to, to fill in, to provide the additional information, the survey, if you saw the whole map, would say the acreage is based on the road right of way location. And as we all finally remember, that section of Route seven was disputed as far as where the boundary was.
So the issue is over Route seven?
No, that's been resolved because.
Well, no, let's just, the issue between the point four two and the point three eight is Route seven.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And do you folks agree as the applicant that the, that your property is point three eight acres, not point four two?
Correct.
Okay, good. The other question I have just initially, on your application or the way it was warned, it says to include a landscape contractor's yard and future small equipment repair and or sales. So are you requesting the board for everything tonight, or are you coming back in the future for this small equipment repair and sales?
It was recommended that if we had any possible future plans to put it all in as one.
Fair enough. So the application is for everything.
Yeah, we currently don't have any plans to start that business. But, you know, it, it was an option to say, okay, if we wanted to have some retail there, you know, should we put it in now? So we added it to it.
Okay, so questions for you, Jeff. I think you said, if I heard correctly, that. That the minimum lot for this is an acre. The way I read the zone, it was actually two acres.
Uh, yeah, commercial, that's correct.
Correct. And then the other question for you, Jeff, is I noticed you gave the board a copy of the uses. For a contractor's yard. Is a small engine repair indoor sales. Is that also an allowed either permitted use or conditional use in this zone?
The, the, actually, the table of uses is included in, in this package. And I don't know that I have that. If I can borrow Charlie's, maybe I can.
Cause the only table of this device on the application was on the contractor's yard.
Okay, um, yes, I'd have to go check that, uh.
Well, I think that's important to know. And that's a conditional.
Yeah, it could, that could be an oversight on my part and I.
I just think we need to get the playing ground kind of.
Yeah, okay. So if you, if you'd like, there's a copy of the zoning regulations with Mr. LaCoi right now, which will get bad on LaCoi. Where's your three ring binder? Carrie, right there in that three ring binder? Go to the back or?
I've got my zone.
Oh, okay. So it would be, uh, article four, article three. And so. So, uh, what you want to look down here for is. The sheet, you know, equipment, small equipment sales, services, anything like that.
What is that you exactly do you want to do?
Basically, a bigger workshop.
So if you want a workshop. You have storage units there, right?
What else? He runs his business out of it.
I heard my business out of it. And what exactly is your business?
Mine is Eagle Enterprise. Landscaping, excavation, lawn care.
Okay. Anything else?
Not currently, no.
Well, that you're asking for. So, um, the, uh, the page twelve has two of the, uh, uses that, uh, we've discussed. Machinery sales and service is, is a permitted use in the commercial zone.
Have you, you guys been in for a permit to operate your commercial business prior to this? Or just acquired a building, just set up shop without a permit or how did that work?
Well, all he was doing was parking vehicles at the time.
Okay.
And, and so like.
Excuse me, Jeff. I think the question was directed.
Sorry, we bought it and Cameron started his mowing business. Well, he started before that and we had moved his business up there. I didn't know I had to do any other permitting to have his business there.
So what initiated this request for permit? Why?
This one now?
Yeah, you said you didn't know. So why are we having one now? But what was the, what's the impetus?
Well, his business has grown. He currently tries to repair his equipment and there's a one bay garage there. Uh, in the small twenty by forty building and it's sometimes hard to do that. So a lot of times he's working outside. And it's come to the point, and the house was in disrepair. Um, you know, originally it was in a tent, like, well, he could possibly maybe live there, but it wasn't repairable. So as time grew, as he grew his business, it made sense to say, okay, could we, since it's a commercial lot. Put a new building there, give him a bigger workshop, be able to clean up some of the mess that we have around there because. Right now, we don't have enough indoor storage, so.
Well, uh, uh, other residential, under cottage industry, he could, he's entitled, he could run a, a landscaping. Business.
Right, under home occupancy?
Under home occupancy. But this is a total different animal.
Totally different. You got, you have a sign, right? You have a sign there?
Yeah.
Yeah, home occupation, no sign.
Yeah.
And, and also just add what Jeff said, I just found retail sales is also a conditional use in this district. So it sounds like what's requested is either a conditional use or a permitted use in this district.
Okay.
What's good request?
Okay, just for the record, the structure that there is. Is what? It's, it's not a garage. It's a house.
There's a house.
Yeah, in the picture you can see there's a house and then there's a twenty by forty small building. There's always a commercial building that had TV repair shop in it at one time and Jeff had the storage right there.
We had a change of use to retail storage. And there has been, it has been a change of use on that permitted change of use on that property.
Copy of the application that I applied and was approved is in the back of your package, Joe.
But you used the existing building that was there. You didn't create any new square footage.
Yeah.
Didn't it?
And, and just line clear, if you look at the survey, the building to the left or to the south, I, I believe, yeah. What's the use of that currently? Is that where the TV repair shop was?
Yeah, that's what we were just saying. Jeff had storage there, right?
And then now the house is the building on the lot to the north, right? Okay. And what is the house currently being used for, if anything?
Uh, it was being used to store some of his equipment inside, but it's currently not being used for anything.
Because it's dilapidated or?
It's rough. Yeah, yeah. So the other is, is a rented storage sheds?
Retail storage. Retail rental.
It's retail rental. You're using it for?
It's been cut into base.
Okay, yeah.
So in a nutshell, you're trying to turn the house into a garage by tearing the house down and reconstructing a garage. Somewhat on the same footprint. A little bit of exaggeration from it, that due to its dimensions. Changing the north footprint or the east footprint towards seven. We're staying with that. And then we're expanding it, you know, to the west by like eight feet. The house is twenty two, so it would go thirty and then have an overhang.
But, but aren't you also going outside the footprint on the south easterly corner?
The south side, yes, we're coming six feet closer to the existing. There's a, there's a large amount of space between these two.
So just so I want to make sure I'm clear. So on what was submitted. The green is the existing structure and the orange is the proposed.
Yes.
Okay. So what is the square footage of the existing green structure?
It's twenty two by thirty two feet. For the house. We already removed the garage and the back part of the kitchen. Well, so I, I'm not sure what that's, you know, size was at this point.
So, because on the, the ser- the carousel survey. The existing structure is not like twenty two by thirty two. It's kind of a weird shape. You're saying some of that's already been removed.
Yes, correct. If you took the house and basically squared it up from the, um. The east side and the north side, yeah, funky kind of L shape on the back. There's a garage and a kitchen. That's been removed already.
How long ago was that removed?
Last summer.
So less than a year?
They have a current demo permit for the building.
So, and I think this may be important in the analysis, okay. You're saying the current square footage of what's there now on the quote house is twenty two by thirty two.
Correct, yes.
Do you know what it was before you demolished whatever you demolished? And the reason it may be very important is if you look under section. Eight oh eight, the expansion is limited to fifty percent of what was there. So I think it's important that we know these numbers. Because I think that's going to be one of the deliberative issues.
Percent over what was there?
Yeah, basically you can have, if it's, let's just say a hundred square feet, you can go to fifty more square feet. Okay, so that's why I think it's very important, you know, what was there. If you're gonna go with thirty or twenty two by thirty two, we'll take that. But I can tell you that may very well limit what the board may grant. In addition, because.
And you're also, you're also doing an overhang. So, is that counted as, as?
That one went, I think, to the Supreme Court in Castleton on Lake Bonzi.
I remember something about that.
South side, yeah, the overhang with the huge issue in Casleton.
So what is the outcome? Was it considered a structure?
You remember, Jeff? I don't.
This was, this was more complicated than that. We're talking about the west, northwest side of the lake with this big A frame thing. There was, there was a lot of issues that were, um, due to, by the way, they were complicated. Because the, the length, the zoning language was ambiguous. So, so, um, the total structure, the, the, the listing card for the structure that we're talking about taking down. Is thirteen hundred and fifteen, the footprint is thirteen hundred and fifteen square feet.
So just so I'm clear, does that include the demolished part?
Yeah, it was, yeah, the demolish is an active permit. So it, it, I, you have to take it, I, I. It's being based on the total structure.
Six hundred and fifty, you could add on.
That's why I'm asking.
Yeah. So, uh, if you look at the, uh, survey, uh, the fir- first schematic that's in your package. That had the highway survey. This one, in your application page. That's the second, very first schematic in your package. There you are. Okay, so in the yellow square, there's coverage calculations.
So let me ask you this, because this, you know, is confusing and I think the applicant needs to tell us. So do you agree with what Jeff just said? That the existing structure before demolition started was one thousand three hundred and fifteen square feet?
I can't be positive, but I think he's got that in documentation for the property.
I can make copies of the board.
Let me put it this way. Do you accept that for this purpose of this hearing?
Okay, yes.
Yes, okay. So what's your proposal? What's the new square footage of the new structure?
With or without the overhang or?
Well, let's.
Building itself.
Well, let's do it with and without, okay. When you say the overhang, I mean, are we talking the roof overhang or that big? That, that big open overhang. I think that you have to include. That's different than, you know, the overhang on a. A building. So what's the total of, I think, what's the total square footage of what's been submitted in orange?
Well, on this sheet.
If you look at.
I think we need, I think we need testimony from the applicant.
Okay, so without. I don't have a calculator in front of me, but thirty, we've got thirty six by thirty. Uh, but if you add that o- open overhang, you've got another fourteen feet. So you really have thirty six by, uh, forty four feet.
Thirty six by forty four?
I have the numbers, sir.
So you're saying thirty six by forty four?
I got fifteen eighty four. For those two.
There's thirteen.
Then there's another.
It's thirteen hundred and fifteen.
I get the same number. I get fifteen eighty four.
Yeah.
So, and, and let me just, so I'm clear, that's everything in orange. Which I think that includes the two str- uh, storage trailers.
Correct. It does not include two, two storage units.
Okay.
Two metal containers.
And I think if we do that quickly, we would add.
Three hundred and twenty square.
Right, eight times twenty times two. So basically that's one sixty, so three twenty. Is that correct? So basically the number we've got for the total new structure would be. Let's see how my math is. It looks like nineteen oh four.
Correct.
Is that good? Okay. So just so the record's clear, applicant agrees that the existing footprint before any demolition. Was one thousand three hundred and fifteen feet. And the total new square footage in orange, what you're proposing is nineteen hundred and four feet.
Okay.
Okay, good.
And that, did you have the overhang? Did you comp the overhang?
We did.
Yeah, okay.
When, when we're talking the overhang, so there's no confusion, it's called the open overhang on the drawing, correct?
But, but includes.
That, that's what I'm being told is.
That satisfies the fifty percent requirement.
Yeah. That's a difference of five hundred and eighty nine feet, here, square feet. And, um, that is less than half of thirteen hundred and fifteen.
Yeah.
Just want to get that on the record. And then the other question I have is. If it's in here somewhere, what's the setback on the front? Of the existing structure, if you know. And I'm going to ask that for each, for the south side, the north side and the west side. I, it looks like the west side, I want to be drawing this thirty five feet. Is that correct?
It's, it's pretty estimated. When I did the measurement, I couldn't get right to the. Figure where the property line was exactly, but I believe the allowable setback is twenty five feet. So.
Hmm, but let's make sure we're on the same page there. I thought I read fifty.
Yeah.
Let's make sure we're on the same. Well, I'm looking on page sixteen of the zoning and it says in commercial, all other uses. Fifty, fifty, fifty. And minimum frontage is two hundred, but the front setback is fifty, the side is fifty. And the rear is fifty.
So are we talking on the front setback in regards to Route seven or the state right away or?
That's a good question.
The state right away is really close to the existing property. Wouldn't it be the edge of his property, not the right away?
It would. I mean, there's also an argument that his grandfather, the footprint is grandfather.
Right. And you're not encroaching further than what's already there.
Correct, right.
You know, it's not in compliance. It may not be in compliance. That's to be determined.
As far as from Route seven. But the, is the existing building, the proposed building, where's that coming on the, on the rear setback?
Well, rear setback, it's closer than what was there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
Best estimate is about thirty five feet.
Right.
Also, I don't know, it may be on here somewhere. Do you know what the distance between the. Let's say it'd be the northerly side of the building and the property line going that way? I don't, I don't see where unless. And I mean, I think, I think we can agree the south line. Fifty feet. I mean, it's far in excess of that.
See, it depends on if you use the.
I didn't realize that the commercial setbacks were different than the residential.
Yeah. If you, if you're, if you're calling it a pre-existing. Then it's one, if it's not being used as pre-existing, then it's all fifty.
Yeah, because you're writing commercial for single family, two family and multi-family, you are correct. But then if you go right under that, it says all other uses.
Yeah.
And the use is.
But that's why we didn't change the footprint.
It kind of defeats, so.
We weren't.
Right. And we assumed that we had distance towards the west side to be able to work. And then we just wanted to come in a little bit on the south side. Uh, we could take the two storage, the E V twenties and put them behind the. The exist- the existing places that has the storage. You could. Where they're currently kind of in that position now, but that's not. We're, we were trying to hopefully where they're at, turn that back into the parking lot, which kind of shows in the original picture. And then just kind of clean everything up with the the building and the space. And then, you know, there's a fence on the north side behind the existing. And therefore, between the building and the fence here, scampering store, extra things that he has. Extra supply, so the goal is is to really kind of try to clean up as you pull into it and to the. To the left.
Yeah, I came into the eye. I have a question today, okay. On the existing building, you're trying to take the existing foundation and everything out. Okay, so will you have room on the property if you do shove it back fifty feet?
Hey, don't think we would have room. I I don't, I don't see it.
Because that would meet. Those requirements.
It would meet code requirement, but then we would have to get a variance from our neighbors. Being touching on his property.
No, no, I'm referring, the distance from the road. If you shove everything backwards, because you haven't built anything yet.
Right.
Okay, uh do you have enough distance to do what you want? Front to back.
I would have to remember, but I I don't believe.
What do, what do you think that the dimension is from the edge of the road to the existing building?
Or maybe twenty feet?
Oh, so you're talking to one thirty feet, okay.
It's very, it's very close, yeah, and they redo Route seven to Fisher, I'm gonna redo seven in Fortune eight of cotton.
Yeah. Well, they're gonna raise it five and a half feet in front of my house. Yeah.
Maybe it'd be a good time now to hear from the neighbor on concerns.
Mm-hmm, sure.
So, like I was previously.
And just for the record, which side are you on, the south or the north?
I am on the south. Okay. You know, I'm uh operating the barn, um I have nine families that live there. Uh we don't want to see uh, you know, an excess of noise, excess of lighting, like a sort of access of, you know, idling. Um and we would last to, you know, uh sorry. See that hours of operation are, you know, within reason to not disturb the residents of the barn. Um if a parking lot is going to be constructed where the conexes are currently, and we would like to see at least a fence with a net put up. So that, you know, lights are not shining directly into the tents uh windows, basically. Yeah. Depends on my my business, yes, for sure.
So essentially, your concerns are hours of operation and screening on the south side. Your north side.
Yes, on the south side, at the bare minimum, you know, if any, like additional, like noise prevention, preventative uh. Trumps and foliage could be installed, that would be excellent.
Question for the record to the applicant, what is your proposed hours of operation?
Uh usually it's from.
Is that Monday through Friday?
Uh about seven days, every day.
Every day?
Yeah. Who's not really there during the day, it's more of a.
In the night, in the morning, in the night.
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, for the mowers or whatever. Or have customers coming in and out all night. And in regards to the south side, we put into the the drawings that our intent was is once we move some things out of the way. I wasn't thinking of a stockade fence, but maybe a split-reel fence, and we were looking at in drawing, just planting a couple of trees. You know, as a, you know, visual and.
Is is the southerly building that's there, is that going to be continued to be used as it currently is?
Yes. But our our future plan is, and I put it on one of these documents. We have a very small office, eventually we might make the office part in their jigger. So once I retire from my current job and I'm in chair of office in there.
But that's not part of tonight's.
It's not gonna change the exterior and footprint on there.
But for tonight's application, we're doing nothing with the building.
Our our only intention with that building is to eventually re-site it to make it look like the new building and clean that up too.
Yeah, that's not an issue. Gary, in the street, and there's a definition, uh the street line you might want to take a look at too.
Definitions.
Yeah, because it mentions for the setback. Oh, I don't know. Let's see.
Where are you looking at?
It's under street line and the definitions. We just had it. Okay, there's why, there's structure, there's subdivision.
Your street line.
Street line, yeah, page seventy-three.
Or fifty feet, so I think eighty-three feet.
Eighty-three.
Established street line near now with the existing building.
Well, no, what this is saying is, is for, it's too determinate, they said they didn't know where it was. You'd have, you'd measure from the center line of the road, thirty-three feet in, then your front setback would be fifty from that, so I understand it.
Well, I mean, that would be in the backside of the building. I mean, that's.
Well, Jeff's got to know where the right of day is there, but irregardless, it says right here, the street line, if you can't determine it. You measure thirty-three feet from the center line of the road towards the building. And then to meet this rear, to meet the front setback, it has to be fifty feet from that point.
Yeah, we're doing, he's already got ones established.
Right, he's in a pre-existing. That's pre-existing, no, that's when it was a three-rod road, before it was a six-rod road, thirty-three feet would be four rods. Thirty-three, thirty-three be sixty-six.
So that guy would have to tear his house down because it didn't need the setback?
No.
Well, then, what's the difference? And it's going to be smaller.
Right, but when we asked what his setback is going to be, he said he didn't know. You've got to be, if you know where your street line is, is any, I don't know, is any of that portion of what he's presenting within that setback? Because it's actually eighty-three feet from the center of the road, if you, as that's written.
If you were to build something new and fresh.
Yeah.
Point, he's he's going like, okay, I'm using the same.
But he's staying with the same front.
He's staying with the same front and close to the, his attempt or angle is to try to. Um establish a building somewhat on the same footprint with some deviation. But it's all going to be away from the road. Well, the front of the new building is going to be the same location as its front.
Right.
Tangent line as the existing house.
Right. You have two issues, one, if you use the existing building as the reference line. Then the building starts there and continues back towards the barn, toward the barn. If you follow the rules, it's thirty-three feet plus fifty, in other words, the edge of the building would be eighty-eight feet.
From the center line.
Eighty-three.
Eighty-three.
See what I mean? But he's not, he's going to, from what I'm, what I'm seeing here and having testified is the front of the new building. Is no closer than the.
Existing.
The one that was torn down, right? It's not there.
Still there.
So that's still there.
Yeah.
So from that point.
Yeah.
But it's not shown, it's not shown dimensionally on that.
No. So the determination, one of the determinations of the board is, is um. See if the building could be, could be built using the. Front setback of the existing building and putting another building in its place, another front, the front line of the building. In the place. Same place where the existing building is.
Years ago, I built a house on a lake and the town, that particular town. I could slide the building off. Replace the foundation and slide the existing building back on and modify the existing building to meet. Exactly what we're discussing. If I tore the building down. Then it was a non-conforming law. You had to start, you had to comply. I had to comply.
So I guess we got to find out what, how to interpret Pittsburgh's rules.
Yeah.
Let's see. When I got my permit for my, my new garage. They said all I had to do was keep the same footprint. My, I tore the whole garage down. Poured cement slab. The day before I poured the cement slab, painted it over and sold me to a back piece of land where if you'd have done it. Two weeks earlier, I'd moved the whole thing back and I'd had two-car garage. I still think the towns should have split the cost because I saved them a lot of money because they got them off our back. They should have paid guys.
Generally, though, under zoning, the the footprint is sacrosanct, okay? Whether you restore it, you tear it down or whatever, usually the footprint is sacrosanct. And Castleton used to have it the way it used to be, and it was big on Lake Balmeseen. And I tried to case the environmental court and lost, and it went down. You could extend it no further, but you could expand it in either direction. And I don't see anything like that, you know, but Jeff, and you know, I don't see anything like that in Pittsburgh.
Well, it does. Did you?
Unless you.
Did you look at eight oh four or eight oh eight?
I did.
And you don't feel that that provides for expansion? Because that's how I agree.
I think it's an interpretation thing. I I really do, because because one interpretation of these eights, okay? Is the only thing that this has to do with is the lot size. That because he doesn't meet two acres, you can do it, the other potential interpretation is somehow you don't have to comply with setbacks.
Which would be a variance, wouldn't it?
Well, unless you interpret these eights, you know, eight oh eight or eight oh four, whatever one it is. That interpret that to say that. That also applies not only to lot size, but to dimensional requirements, i.e. setbacks. But if it doesn't, I agree with you, Rick, then you'd be talking about a variance.
If you're going to use the existing front line and the existing. Could be east-west. In other words, north is this way. Yeah, but I'm saying, this is your, your north-south line, which faces the road.
Uh, east line faces the road, right?
The east.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, but the building is north and south.
Yeah, okay.
And okay, and the back wall is east and west. If you're using those two existing planes. The only modification is the very front corner. And that line does go through. The part of the existing building. So the only place you're really changing is that little bit in the front corner. Follow what I'm saying?
I get what you're saying, I agree with you on the front corner, but there's the whole back issue. The back doesn't mean.
The back, the back is the, is, is added on, yes.
Yeah, and that doesn't mean the fifty feet.
Right. And we on the back side, so it's a variance. It's a dimensional matter, informative.
Agree, it depends on which way you go on that issue.
The only, the concern that I'm still going with, like we started in the beginning, is the use is changing. Total change of use on a really small, small lot. And I mean, that's the, the purpose of the zoning is to, you know, provide adequate setbacks for neighbors and and so forth, and. Pre-existing use was residential, the other uses has been discontinued.
One question for the record, and I think I saw it in here, yeah, I saw somebody's calculation. I think we can all agree that with the proposed building and with that building to the south. We don't have, we don't exceed coverage problems, correct?
It complies with.
It complies with.
We should have have a state to it, though, it's, what was it, twenty percent?
Twenty, so the coverage, the maximum coverage under this is twenty percent. And your maximum cover is less than that, is that? So it is less than twenty.
Including that other building?
Everything on the property, yes.
Okay.
But and it's in that, it that that little calculation is on that first schematic on it, I don't know if you've got a color version.
I don't have a color.
Okay, so the first schematic has a yellow. Insert, you've got it right there, man.
That first schematic has a yellow insert that shows all the calculations. It's the one that has the state survey. Twenty percent max. Right up in the left-hand corner, Gary?
I have, yeah, I found it, I followed it on a different point, yeah.
Yeah, twenty percent maximum coverage is thirty-three hundred.
It would have been good to do it under home occupation.
Yeah. That would have been very helpful.
I have an opinion, but I don't muddy the water. Unless Gary would like to talk about home occupation, which is usually limited to indoor activities under the statute. Problem I have with home occupation, it should be converted to either or. Allows for, it allows for principal dwelling and it allows for accessory dwelling or accessory structures. But it does not allow specifically outdoor activities. That tells, suggests that key indoors.
I think that's another.
Yeah, it's a different discussion.
I don't think this, I don't think it's going to get anywhere on this one.
No.
No, it doesn't, it doesn't apply here.
So, anything else from the board or the applicant or the uh the joint?
I guess I, to address Josh's concerns, we haven't heard anything about hours of operation. Any. Oh, I missed the hours of operation.
Seven thirty to six thirty, seven days a week.
All right, I didn't catch that, I'm sorry. From the glasses switch swap, where I can't figure out which one. And, okay, what title? Just to address you on the lighting, um we currently only have one motion light on the back of the little building.
Yes.
It comes on when obviously this activity shuts off. On the main building, there's a drawing in there where we're gonna, on the front by the garage doors, have a couple ways spacing down. On the front facade, we were gonna put a couple lights just spacing down, low lumen, low wattage, just to. Like in the front of the building, similar to what Casellas did down the road. Um and then where the parking lot, when we fixed that, we were hoping to put in a small pole with a light. And it can be motion activated, shining back towards the building, but not at your building. That shines back in that way, so it's not our intent to, you know, have light spillage or light pollution really anywhere. Just enough to keep it so, you know, it's somewhat visible.
And you're using the down, are you?
Correct, right.
There are schematics in your application.
Okay, um. Concern is right along the boundary there, between us there.
What's that?
That's my biggest concern is just.
Yeah, I mean, we're gonna just put a light this way.
That's my biggest concern is just, right, we were gonna just put a light this way. I did have it on one of the pictures, but shining back towards the building. And then there's currently a light on this corner, it's on a motion and it kind of shines out here right now. But there won't be any big lights on the building shining towards your property.
Just along with this boundary line, though.
Yeah.
You know, I would definitely need like a fence or something like that put out, you know, for the. This is screening out to, you know, this is people's backyard we're talking about, right? Seeing your property and. Cause I drive, we're driving down the street, see like right into.
Is that something that? Yeah, I need to provide or is it?
It's a, the boards, if they, if they were to grant your permit. They could put that as a condition.
I guess I'd like to know too, you know, you've talked about some outdoor activities here, here. Your. Lean to and open shed and so forth. What type of activities are you actually gonna be doing? You're a landscape business now, what are you gonna be doing seven days a week? Uh, for the type of activities you're gonna be doing.
The open overhang?
Well, it's for the entire property. So you said you're gonna, you're. You testified that you're gonna work seven days a week, probably six till. Or seven till, seven thirty until six, okay? During that period of time, I don't know how many employees you have. Just you, okay? So you'll be doing activities of what nature?
So ninety percent of the activities I do is just loading equipment or unloading equipment. Nothing really happens at the yard, everything's trucked off-site. To customers' houses and new places of business. Um, we don't usually do anything at the house or there. The only thing I really do there is is like I have to fix my equipment, like a dump truck or the excavator or this or that. You know, make sure it's up and ready so that way when I do need to go to work, I can, you know.
So what do you have for equipment that you're talking about?
There's a lot. I mean, we got excavator, we got dozer, we got dump trucks, we got trailers.
Mowing equipment.
Mowing equipment, I don't know, neighbors, growers.
So you intend to have all of that equipment on the yard as a storage?
Yes.
But you're only gonna repair stuff, as I understand it, on your own equipment?
Yes.
So Gary Cufford came along, I need my lawnmower repaired or whatever, you said, I don't do that. You're not a repair shop, correct?
No, not currently, not currently.
So any repair work? Let me ask you this, just so it's clear, cause that's, that's a huge difference. So it's just repairing your own equipment. What about sales? What I've confused, what kind of sales are you talking about from the property?
So. Unless I buy something, I use it and then say, you know, it gets put into, you know. Say I stop using it for, you know, I used it for one job and now it's just sitting. So instead of having it sit, well, I'll just sell it, you know.
Personal use sale.
Yeah, well, so that's.
So it, it's not like you're buying, I don't know, twenty lawn mowers, bringing them in to sell them. The only sales would be on equipment that.
I own.
You own that you don't need anymore or for whatever reason. Okay, that's important.
All right. Yeah, I guess I was under the impression, you know, you worked on small engine, I thought you were gonna have, well, like what you had, Eddie, a chainsaw business, a lawnmower business. I guess that was what I envisioned when I first heard about this, so. That was clarification in my mind, what you're doing there.
And all this equipment, I take it, would be located in. What's, I think, I think it's what uh, would be on the existing parking lot, kind of between the two buildings and towards the back?
I'm saying that, you know, it's supposed to be for small engines and dump trucks and excavators are typically considered large and the movement and. Well, that'd be annoying.
Well, it depends on how big you can have a tiny excavator, if you have a monster, you know.
You went by some examples getting here today, right?
Yeah, when he's good out there, I would consider that a small, very small excavator.
Does that fall into small equipment, though? I mean, that.
Yeah, because I mean, that that thing can't weigh more than eight thousand pounds.
Oh, okay, so there's a smaller one out there. I was talking about the one I drove by on the way here, that one.
That three twenty-five? That's a sixty-six thousand pound machine.
Yeah, I mean, you know, he has fifty horsepower tractors out there, too, I mean.
That's a small one.
So, so what would you, so what would you? Like, is there any sort of um, condition that you would like for, for, for the board to consider?
I mean, I would just consider the amount of noise that's gonna be emitted from slightly larger machi- slightly larger machinery. You know, uh, small equipment to me is like lawnmowers, you know, pieces of binocular, a trailer and whatnot, which some of it is.
What have you observed? Let me, let me go back up. What, have you been, have you been working there? Working on your stuff there?
Yeah.
How's that, how's that been?
I would say it's been fine, you know, we have not had any problems. I'm not here to, you know. So there's anyway, there's not been any complaints thus far. Um, but I don't want any complaints in the future. So, you know, I'm here to protect the.
If the board was to grant the permit for the building. Would all of your repair work be done inside or would some, so all repair work would be done inside?
Yes, that's why we need the new building because I can't. The bigger stuff like the excavator, the dump truck, I can't work on. Kind of, cause I have to work on it outside.
What's the height for the building?
The height of this what, fourteen? Inside, uh, yeah, it is fourteen cent inside. Yeah, yeah.
Good heights, you can get a piece of.
Twenty-four feet to the top.
And that was part of the reason we went a little deeper too, was so you could get lengthwise something in there.
Yeah, yeah.
And what's, what's the proposed use? I wanna go through it. This. Open overhang, which is fourteen by thirty-six feet, I mean, what's your proposed use of that? And same question for the two uh. Trailers there. Storage containers, what would the proposal?
Under the overhang, we'll be able to put the excavator underneath there. Um, he has a Kubota tractor and a couple other pieces, kind of keep them undercover out of the way. The storage containers, um, we were fortunate enough to find those last fall, get a deal on. But it'll help us be able to organize other stuff that's in the yard and get those in the storage container.
So both of those areas are basically to make exterior storage in, inside, basically to clean up the yard.
Clean it up.
What about the, you have water and sewer there?
There is currently water there, there is a septic tank and a dry well there. The water has not been hooked up for currently, um. And I don't know when the septic tank was used last, but. My understanding that the septic tank could potentially be moved. Because it is in part of the, the footprint. In the overhang or actually where probably the storage container is.
Is there town sewage out there?
No.
So you're saying the overhang is in the area of the septic tank?
The, I think the septic tank is more, um, where the second storage container is.
Is there, is there any intent in this new building to put any bathroom facilities?
We have considered that, you know.
So is the answer, we're having bathrooms or we're not?
If we try to put a bathroom in, it wasn't in our initial idea, I, I think.
What about floor drains in the building inside?
Uh, I don't know where you put the floor drain in.
I don't think you are, it's illegal. Floor drains are a big.
Okay, so don't.
Don't put a floor drain.
Okay.
Yeah, floor drains are a big, you know, Sam, correct?
I know, we have one in our shop.
Yeah, a long time ago.
Yeah, yeah, back in the day, that floor drain.
Yeah, it's been like twenty-five years, you can't put a floor drain in.
So do you, do, do you, if you're gonna be working on equipment, you'll be washing it and so forth?
If I could clarify a point, um, the property is served by municipal water, uh, there was a septic. There was a septic system now that served the office. Um, they haven't lived in or used the office, uh, so they haven't really used it. Um, but the water account is still active, they just have asked the town to set it up as a minimum account.
Yeah, but didn't you just say that your storage, storage boxes are on?
They're not currently, nothing is currently on it.
Okay, but is it any part, will any part of the building that you're proposing gonna be on it? Or is it the storage?
Leach field.
Yeah, you know, it sounds to me like you might be.
Nothing should be on any leach field. And if we need to, we would move the storage or the septic tanks.
Cause I believe you don't need.
Permit for that.
That's your type of new permit to move it.
You don't have a, you'll need a wastewater permit, I think, right, Gary?
Well, the state, the state takes the position that you're okay to the tank. But if you monkey beyond the tank, you may have a permit issue. It's the one area the state has. Gotten better, you can do certain repairs in the leach field without a permit. A few years ago, if you touched the leaf, leach field, it was a permit. Now there are specific things, but if. You like move the leach field or something, you got a permit issue.
But you can't move the storage tank.
Yeah, you'd have to, I'd check with your lawyer and engineer, but the, the, the tank is very different than the leach field. Very different.
But just that we didn't, I didn't see it on the plan. No, that's just what the location was. I don't wanna see you have more problems.
Yeah, yeah, I can, if it's grandfather, don't get into that mess.
No, but it should be located so we know where it is at emergency, everything else.
So in order to say where to move ahead. Say, permit at this level was granted, Gary, are they subject to like the state review of any sort on this? They, they would be.
I think so. Division of Fire Prevention, the septic is, you know, just to give you a, well, the septic is a huge issue with the state. I mean, huge issue. The good news is you have municipal water, but you don't have, you know. But you may wanna check into that because you may have some grandfather, as Jeff said, but it's, it's tricky. That's, that's very tricky with the state today. But the way, if we grant a permit, uh, you would have a permit from the town. But the way the permits are issued here, I believe, is they're subject to obtaining any and all necessary state permits that may be necessary. And the permit, the town permit doesn't become valid until they have their state permits either, right? The way it's written, the way it's written is correct.
Um, it's that subject to have fifty to the acreage. That would, that'd be the trigger here.
Oh, go ahead.
So, so I, I was wondering. Who would we contact or what would we need to do?
What you really should do on any project like this is contact. An engineer type, not a lawyer. You, you, what you really need is like an, like an engineer type. You know, because it is, permits are huge in this state, you know, it's like. It's, it's getting worse and worse. And I'm just telling you, I would be, I would, if I was doing a project like this, I'd get an engineer involved. Just to make sure there's no issues with stuff, it's your choice, but. As I say, if the town grants this permit, it'll be subject to you obtaining, you know, all necessary. State permits and if you're gonna have a bathroom in there. It's a potential permit issue. It's like Rick said, it's a potential wastewater permit issue. The other thing that you may have is, if it's a public building, you may have, uh, it used to be labored industry, now it's Division of Fire Prevention. But somebody like an engineer type, you know, they're the ones that would. They do it all the time and they can tell you, you know.
Just don't.
Yeah, but nothing's easy. I mean, I'm just telling you. But there are a lot of issues, but as I say, this would satisfy. The town, I think, Jeff, unless there's anything else, you know, from the town, but this is one aspect. And a huge decision, decision with much bigger projects than yours, like say the Dollar General here. You know, what do you go first, the town or the state? Most developers go to the town first, get their town permit. And then we'll go to the state, cause you know, there's Act two fifty, Act two forty-nine, all this stuff, but. Permit in the wetlands has become huge, hopefully don't have any wetlands.
That's why I was asking, I hate to see people get ambushed, Jim.
Yeah.
That's terrible, you know, because like you said, what, you know, what do you do next? And we can't here to, can't advise you, but yet. By the same token, you know, we're a small town and we all know each other.
And the other problem you got is, I mean, yours is a very high-profile project, it's on Route seven, you know. So.
My understanding, based on the lot size, that it doesn't require Act two fifty because it's under an acre.
That's, the water and sewer is not Act two fifty.
Still.
But you, but Mike, you know, you are, you are doing something there now, right?
Didn't put sewer in, if we didn't have any type of bathroom, and we just had our water hook up that's there.
There are issues with that.
Even have to get a permit to hook up your water.
Yeah, there are issues.
You'll wanna address them.
You want to address them. It sounds like if a permit's granted here, I mean, looks like this isn't a cheap project, you're investing a lot of money. And I think I'd wanna know what I'm getting into before I made the investment. But as they say, an engineer, uh, you know, they can tell you pretty quickly on what you may and may not. Need, because the state has also become, I represent a lot of quarries. And it used to be horrible with the employee issue, you know, you had to put a septic system in and where there's a quarry, usually there's no soil. So it was always a problem, but the, the state has become more liberal in that area.
With corner bodies and stuff.
Yeah, they have, they have. Yeah. And they used, just like, as I say, you used to not be able to touch this, the leach field or it was a permit issue. Now there's exceptions, you can do so, I was at a closing one time, a couple of years ago, not to bore you. We're at the closing, it's like we made changes to the leach fields, like what? Everyone goes nuts. We actually took pictures of it and went over to Dave Swift in Rutland and showed him the pictures and said. Do we need a permit for this during the closing? He said, no, you're fine. Yeah, but as a lawyer, anytime you mention we're making, we're monkeying with the septic, the leach field, it's like, don't. You know, cause it may be a permit trigger.
Yeah, so, um, maybe identifying where your. Leach field is, or maybe it was a dry well ba- back in the day, you know, or it was just a. A concrete tanker, that may even be what you have there, depending on the age, could be an old metal tank, which. Could be all rotted out and collapsed, but it's still there. Gary, can they, can you change the, the tank if it was metal to a? Either a plastic or concrete.
If it's the holding, if not the holding tank, if it's the tank to a leach field, the answer is yes. If the tank is the leach field, you may, you probably got a problem.
Right, but I mean, back in the day, as you know, they, you know, you have a concrete tank. And usually ten feet away or a short distance away, there was a, another perforated concrete tank.
That's the dry well.
Yeah, and that was it, surrounded it with stone? And you walked away.
Yep, that was the leach field.
That was right.
Yeah, yep, I agree. And there's still a lot of those in existence.
Yeah.
There truly are. And there's a huge question, I was involved in one, they replaced the crushed stone. Was that a trigger?
Interesting question.
Yeah, that it was, that's what they did, it was an old dry well, just like standing, and they replaced the crushed stone.
Not the tank, though.
Not the tank.
You dig, you dig around it, you dig back until you get a clean dirt. Fill it back in with fresh stone and it used to meet, then the state stopped, you couldn't touch it.
You're exactly right.
Because thirty years ago, I used to do that.
Yeah, I agree, I agree. But I, I think the one piece of advice I would give you. If you can preserve whatever is there, whether it's a dry well, a leach field or whatever, preserve it. Because if not, you, and you wanna put bathrooms in, you're gonna have to have a designed system. And you know, you're talking probably minimum to put it in twenty, thirty thousand.
Yeah.
Because they're not even allowing.
That's before a pump station.
Yeah, cause they're not even allowing conventional. You're into a mound or something worse.
It's two to four thousand dollars for the permit.
Yeah, with the engineering and everything, it's just, so as I say, if you have a functioning septic system, whatever it is. Preserve it.
So you really should find it before you do.
Do you agree? Do you agree, Jeff?
Yeah. And I, 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 I've relayed that. You're not compromised. Uncount number of people, including the.
If they broke, don't fix it.
Exactly. So is there anything else from anyone? I think I have a good, I'm glad we asked some of these questions, you were very helpful and you've certainly helped a lot. Clarifying what you're working on and who you're selling to, and, cause it was a different vision than why I initially had.
Yeah, same thing. What's your take, Rick?
I got all the questions, I hope, I hope we covered everything for.
Yeah.
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 Like you said, it's.
And I think that was a big nut to crack or exposed on the, this is only to maintain your own equipment, not take stuff off the street and do it publicly with a.
That changes the whole category of what's going on. Any amount of work that you're doing there.
So on the building though, um, what type of building is it gonna be? Is it gonna be a metal building, is it gonna be a?
Potential stick build with metal siding.
Metal siding.
From metal siding, silver roof, brick trim, if they can remove that.
Mm-hmm, and the sides themselves in, in metal are gonna be what color?
Red.
A red building, okay. Yeah, sorry, kinda like your neighbor up the road, or down the road with the barn.
Right, and then we hope to eventually do the same trim to the little building to make it match.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, yeah.
Color of the roof?
But silver. I put it on one of those.
Yeah, there's a good drawing. Yeah, there's a good drawing.
Okay.
Now, does the state have any issues with him using porta-potties?
You'll have to talk to an engineer.
Or if you pick a quarry out back, it'll be okay.
Neighbor might have a problem with that.
Um. Everybody clears mud on this and on all the testimony given, and uh. But it's always can turn into a discussion, I think we need to go into a discussion.
Definitely.
Um. I don't know if we wanna set a time limit, how much time we wanna spend here tonight, it is eight thirty-five.
I think we oughta go in and just get a feel for where the board's at.
Okay.
Okay, that's what I think.
Yeah, okay. Well.
So make a motion to go into a deliberative session, are you?
Well, I think we had to make a motion first to close the, close the hearing.
Any worry, but is what I mean, I guess, no worry, but, okay.
Okay, okay, so I'll entertain a motion, uh, from the members, uh, to go out of the, uh, testimony version of the hearing.
To close the testimony.
To close the testimony?
Yes, so.
Okay, is there a second? Second, okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And now I will, uh, entertain a motion to go into a deliberative session to, uh, deliberate on the matter before the board this evening. Is there a motion? Charlie moves it, and.
We'll.
Two, two, two seconds over there, two seconds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so I guess that'll close the public portion of the hearing. And if you don't know what we're gonna do, we're gonna go into a deliberative session to, um, discuss the. Have a discussion on what we've heard before to get, like Gary said, we like to come up with a idea of where we're going with this. There are some things that we really have to look at hard, uh, because so you know, on the acreage and some, a lot of stuff we discussed earlier, so. Um, at this point.
Where she is.
What, there's shoes, go home, go watch the basketball game. Right, I don't get home in time, I'm coming to your house.
Uh-uh, yeah, I forgot.
Jimmy, you have to go home too. Okay, well, thank you.
I'm so.
Oh, God, nice to see you.
As time goes on, maybe I'll be there. Alright, good night, everybody.
Good night. Yeah, always for you.
Yeah.
On their own? We're still recording, yeah. Yeah. She's in transition.
I know.
I'm still recording right after the guys.
We still got it all?
Hang on, I'm only gonna take. Another church this, I mean, if you want a church.
Are you talking the one that just caught?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, I am going to, uh, declare us out of deliberative session at, uh, nine thirty-seven, nine thirty-eight. Um, and, uh, we'll, we will continue the hearing. A deliberative session on April twenty-eighth at six thirty P M.
Hearing.
Yeah, I don't think we need a motion on any of that stuff.
To be continued. To six thirty P M.
Yeah.
Um, April twenty-eighth.
April twenty-eighth, that's right.
Here. Okay, and then you're gonna warn? Yes, I don't need to warn the hearing. Post this, but then you'll warn the hearing.
Yeah, I'll have the other hearing warned for.
Okay, alright, get that all done.
Right, perfect, okay, so there is no.
Try to get a draft.
Yeah, then else.
Yeah. Okay, do we adjourn this, or?
No, there's no adjournment, we're not, not in the hearing.
Well, you recessed too. Well, you, okay, you, you've continued the hearing, you wanna, any other business, like we just talked about? Um, uh, and we know what the next hearing date is, so I just need a motion to close the meeting, you know? Adjourn, whatever, motion to adjourn.
Well, meetings happen.
Well, we would. There's a difference between a meeting and a hearing, right?
Yeah.
You went into a hearing after you opened the meeting. Yeah, there is.
And then we closed the.
Did we have a hearing or a meeting?
We continued the hearing.
We closed one and issued the decision that.
We're like taking a recess to time forward.
Evidence, we went into a deliberative session. I don't really care, as long as.
So we recessed until.
We'll recess until that date.
The deliberative session is recessed.
Yeah, we'll recess to that date, yes, that we normally do, yeah, what we've done in the past, if that counts for anything.
Yeah.
It does.
Okay, if we can remember, we've been doing this for forty years.
Send people multiple emails, so I'm hopefully.
Well, you got it done.
Is there another way you, before I do it, I'd like to call you a legal voicemail, whatever works.
Well, you got us here.
It worked, got us here.
The meeting's been recessed till, uh, uh, six P M. Six thirty, thirty P M, April twenty-eight.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't tell.
No. At this.
Right, and you're gonna warn back here, that same day for seven.
Yeah.
Okay.
I agree with you.
Good.
Okay. Thanks for coming, Gary.
Difficult. No, actually, I like. I like.